Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Monday, June 3rd, West Fargo City Commission meeting. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next order of business is to approve the Order of the Agenda. Commissioners, what is your pleasure?
I move to approve the Order of the Agenda.
Commissioner Olson moves to approve the Order of the Agenda. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jurdevig. It's been moved and seconded to approve the Order of the Agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, gentlemen. Next order of business is approval of the minutes of May 20th, 2019. They have been distributed. They're on pages two through five.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Jurdevig. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Simmons, second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of May 20th, 2019, as distributed. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business is building permits. Building permit department has distributed their monthly report. What is your pleasure, please?
I move to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Jurdevig, second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the building permits and has been distributed. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business is the approval of the consent agenda. Items A through I, they have been distributed.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Jurdevig. Is there a second, please? Commissioner Thorsted? Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to the regular agenda. The first order of business, item number one, is a 5:30 public hearing for Buffalo Wings and Rings liquor license application. Mrs. Fisk, City Administrator.
Good evening, Commissioner President, Commissioners. Typically, from now on, this would go first through the Liquor Control Board, but this was actually an application that was received prior to the ordinance change, and then the public hearing had to be rescheduled due to other reasons, so this one is coming before you today first. The background check has been done, and the location and the background check have all come back, and the application have all come back sufficient, and so therefore, we are recommending approval of the license.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisk. Is there any questions over? Thank you. We'll close the regular agenda and move into a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Buffalo Wings and Rings liquor license application? Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Buffalo Wings and Rings liquor application? Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of the Buffalo Wings and Rings liquor license application? Hearing none, we close the public hearing. Go back to the regular agenda. Gentlemen, what is your pleasure?
I move to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Jurdevig, second. It's been moved and seconded to approve a hearing for Buffalo Wings and Rings liquor license application. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business on the regular agenda is the update on buffering at Opitansite, item number two. Mr. Paul Tucci.
Good evening, Mr. President, Members of the Commission. Paul Tucci, I'm with Opitans. We're the owners of the center. First off, thanks for having me. Have a beautiful day up here, finally. We've, you guys have way better weather than we did in the cities today, I'll tell you that. It was kind of crappy when I left there. We are here tonight to give you a quick update and then ask for a little bit more time to finish up. I don't know, it was funny, Dustin, Tim and I were just talking, we seemed all were at the site within about five minutes of each other and saw the same things. The work continues to finish up on the north side. The tenant Hornbacher's is open. Early reports are they're doing just fine, which is really good to hear from our standpoint. The adjoining building, they're finishing up, and I think they're going to have some tenants opening up here towards the end of the month, I think is the hope, so we kind of knock on wood on that. For the work on the north side, again, I'm not sure who has or has not been out there recently. All of the landscaping is now in. The only thing we still have to do is put the seed down on the berm, but we need to get the posts done. Once the posts are in, they'll concrete those in, and then the seed will go behind, and then the panels in. So they are, all landscaping is in. The posts, we started at the lift station, kind of in the middle, and we're working to the east, so we make sure we get the fence up behind that building first, and then we'll move to the west, which is a little more open down there. Those residents aren't looking really at any building or anything, so they hope, I talked to Precision Fence before I came here, they hope to have all of the holes out to Cheyenne done yet tonight. I will tell you, when I left them, they had a chisel and a hammer chipping clay off of the auger. I guess as they're going down, it's really, really wet, and it's sticking, and they're having all kinds of logistical issues getting that auger back out, but they hope to have that done, start cementing them in tomorrow. Then, once they're done with that, the landscapers will come in and spray the seed from the lift station east. While they're doing that, the fence people will be going west to get all those posts in. Landscaper will flip to the west. They hope to be starting with the panels by next Monday, one week from tonight. It'll take them about five to six, seven days, again, weather permitting, to get all the panels in, so I'm going to tell you roughly two weeks from tomorrow, everything is done, cleaned up, and we're out of there. We just talked about the fence at the far west end. Kind of maybe miscommunication on our part. I asked Dustin, I thought he was taking it out, he thought I was taking it out, so we'll get the street open. We'll figure that out here in the next day or two. And that'll kind of complete that whole phase. What we'd like to ask of you is, in our development agreement, we have a completion date that came and went last Friday. We'd like to get that extended for a couple of weeks from tomorrow, so call it the 18th or 19th if we could, just to finish up. It's been, as you know, a tough winter and spring up here. We've jumped on things as soon as we could. We appreciate your patience the last time with us. We had a gas line issue we had to deal with that really threw us behind the eight ball. We were hoping to have all this done last fall. That gas line, as you probably saw, caused a lot of problems, cost us a lot of time and money thawing out ground, trying to get parking lots in so Hornbacher's could get open in the spring. So that's the request that we have of you today, is a couple more weeks to finish up if that works, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. I do, no, I'll let you go. Commissioner Simmons? Go ahead. I'll let you go, because it's the same lines. So, the deadline was last Friday. What is the consequence? And I guess I'm, I don't know if I'm asking the city attorney that, or if I'm asking planning and zoning the question. Thank you. Is there an issue with the auxiliary building being developed by a West Fargo developer with his property also? That he is tied also to the completion of this berm and buffering and landscaping? Mr. Silver?
Primarily, Hornbacher's is adjacent to commercial, so their issue is kind of null and void. The big issue is for the developer of the property adjacent to the residential. That's where the buffering requirement comes in. That's why it was considered a condition of the PUD. Opitans is the developer of the site, so although they don't own it anymore, they're still the developer of the site, and they've been obligated to do the improvement.
So, I'd ask, the next question I'd have is of Mr. Tucci. Have you had conversations with Mr. Graham?
Yes, we, Michael and I talked last, most recently last Wednesday or Thursday.
And you share a little bit of that conversation?
Oh, sure.
Because the pressure's under him.
Well, but as Mr. Silver said, it's, we're the developer of the site. We're doing the work. We're trying to get it done so he can get open, get his tenants open. And, you know, I can tell you that I have, if I can show you the emails, for the last month, we have a daily update from our general contractor with a list of things, and now we're down to this berm, so every morning, I get pictures, I get an update. We have, our camera's gone, but that went a week ago, but I had cameras on there that we could see. We've been pushing on this really hard, and Michael knows that we're trying to get this done. If all goes well, we're out of there, you know, a week from Thursday, but everything's got to go perfectly, so he's aware of everything.
Thank you, Mr. Tucci. I'd like clarification on one thing. When you're, when we're talking about, you know, there's $1,000 a day liquidated damages, are you appearing before the commission this evening to ask us to forego that?
Yes.
And give you an extension, or ask for an extension, and you're aware that the meter's running on the $1,000 a day? Clarification, please.
Yeah, to forego the penalty, extend the date from March 31st to, I'm going to say, June 18th, two weeks from tomorrow.
Any other questions of Mr. Tucci?
Yes, Mayor. So, thank you, Mayor. So you said you, they've been giving you updates every day, correct?
Yes.
So what type of updates did they give you last Thursday and Friday, or maybe even Saturday? Because I didn't see much going on around there.
Rather than guess, I'm going to look it up if you don't mind.
Okay, I don't have it all.
I will say I was there Thursday when their augers were jammed with clay. That was a unique experience, seeing what they were dealing with there.
Up on that hill?
On that little berm? Little berm.
Yeah, the, they're having trouble all the way up and down, so on Thursday, by the end, okay, so the email on Thursday was, "All plantings are done. Sod coming today for Lot 5. Seeding will follow. Monument sign and pylon sign power starting on Monday. All irrigation is complete. Fence install start is starting. This will take approximately two weeks. I will be stopping by every morning to give an update and pictures." That was last Thursday at, came in at 7:15 a.m.
Okay, so how about Friday?
Friday. Second, while it puts up, attached are pictures. Landscaper seeded most of Lot 6, prepping the seed around the large city pond lot. Laid sod in the large islands north of Hornbacher's and on the west side of Hornbacher's. Electrician started pulling permanent power to pylon mines.
Nothing on the fence, though. That's where I'm, that's where I'm referring to, in that area.
They had to finish all of the landscaping. They didn't dig the posts until they were done with all the landscaping up on the buffer, so they were putting the trees and the bushes on both sides. That had to be done. That was done at the end of last week, so then they went right into that and started digging the posts.
I guess where I'm going with this is, you know, obviously, the commission is getting a lot of pressure from the neighborhood, and rightfully so, in my opinion, in some cases here. What are we, are you doing anything to rectify that? Are you communicating with the, with the neighborhood, or are we as a city doing that? I mean...
We have not, we, you know, we've asked the question of our general contractor. Are you getting questions from the neighbors? I will tell you that in the late winter, the answer was yes. We had a couple of residents come over and talk to both Andrew and Tom when they were there, but since then, I have not heard anything from our folks at Cross Anderson. Nobody's called me. I think, Tim, I'm going to look at you, there's been a couple of issues that we've talked with about in the last six months, but nothing ongoing weekly call from resident A, B, or C. And, by the way, on Friday, the last sentence was, "The fence contractor started drilling holes for posts." Tina?
I just wanted to inform the commission, right before 5 o'clock, I received an email from a resident that lives in the area, 315 19th Avenue West, and their questions were not only of the deadline date, but they also had a question that says, "The diagram that we are shown shows trees on both sides of the fence, and there seems to be only trees on one side at this time."
North side.
The landscaping plan is, I don't have it in front of me. Yeah, but that, if you look at the approved landscaping plan, that was an early concept. I think the path got wider. At that time, the path was only five feet, I think, in the original one, and we widened it to eight?
This is eight feet, and then it still shows trees on both sides.
Yeah, I just know that the final landscaping had everything on the north side.
Tim, do you, is that, do you know the update on the trees, the plan? I mean, did that change on us from both sides? Is my question, did we ever plan on doing both sides? I don't recall.
We have two different items, so one, the display that Tina had shown there was what was presented at the PUD, and then the second part of it, there is a landscape plan done along with the public improvements, so I'd have to, I'm just going to pull that up and see where those two jive, so. I haven't been called out to inspect anything yet to determine what's finished and what's not, but we'll have to take a look at that.
I have today's report up too, if you want. Again, landscapers are doing the final sod around the signs. Fence is in progress. Posts from Cheyenne to lift station will be placed by the end of the day. Thursday, landscapers will seed thereafter. Fence panels will follow, working from east, we're going to work from Cheyenne west. That was today's.
For the record, I have been called a number of times over the course of probably since December. I've had some personal phone calls from people in the neighborhood wanting to make sure that the commission is, you know, following through on the commitment that the developer had made to the neighborhood. I would guess three or four, maybe. At least three. Any more questions of Mr. Tucci? Okay. Thank you, sir. What's your pleasure, gentlemen?
I guess if I might throw something out there for the commission, I think this needs to get done. We've had a lot, overall, we've had enough complaints, I don't think we want anymore. Personally, I'd be willing to go another week, give them a week, but at this point, I don't want to forego that $1,000. I think if we want to forego that, we can do that a week from now, or when we see how that goes. I don't want to just give, give all that up right now. I mean, that'd be my opinion, to allow them one more week, to, to give them one more week to get it completed, but leave that $1,000 fine in there until we can determine that at a later date. That, that would be my motion, I guess.
Thank you, Commissioner Simmons. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second it so we can discuss it.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson. Been moved and seconded with regard to the buffering at the Opitansite. To allow them one more week, and I'm assuming from today?
Correct.
One more week from today, but the liquidated damages of $1,000 per day are still in effect. Adequately stated?
Correct. I think that will give them incentive, and again, we can determine that, you know, at a later date.
All right.
This was to be completed last fall, right? Under the original?
Well, it was the original, yes.
Yes. Mr. Tucci, you may address this group. Still on the topic.
I think the original date was December 31st, and we came in front of this body before then to extend it out to May 31st based on the gas line change.
Commissioner Thorsted?
Yeah, I think that was kind of my intention, is to... No, I want to go, I would, yeah, my intention was to go back to, like, right now, that last Friday, that's the last Friday you're saying, right? And then if they don't get it done, then they get charged back to their, from, whenever they get it done. We don't know that they're going to get it done in a week. I think it may be hard, but, okay, then, that's part of my motion, then.
Yeah.
We have a motion on the floor. Oh, we'll either have to vote that up or down, or have a friendly amendment, which has to have the approval of the second first, so I'll follow you guys' lead.
I'm up for a friendly amendment.
Second.
Second's up for the, so, Mr. Thorsted, will you restate your motion? All liquidated damages would be assessed, then? Clarification by Mr. Shockley, please. So when there's liquidated damages, is it a calendar day or is it a work week?
We had drafted this in calendar day, so the calendar day is $1,000.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. It's been moved by Commissioner Thorsted as follows. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Jurdevig, second. Been moved and seconded to give Opitans till the 18th of June 2019 to rectify all the work on the buffering and fence landscaping, and if that is not done, then all liquidated damages would be assessed forward from the extended deadline that was given to them. Is taking that adequately, Commissioner Simmons?
One clarification, so I did miss this part, so you're saying, instead of giving them a week, you want to give them the two weeks? Okay. Time to end.
So, our next meeting will be the 17th. Okay?
I think we should make that to the 17th, then, so we have a meeting. I mean, otherwise, John, what would your opinion of that be? 18th or the 17th?
Wouldn't you say 5 o'clock on the 17th?
Then we can, we'll know.
Right.
Thank you for that. Second, is that approved with you?
Yes.
Thank you. Friendly amendment again to June 17th rather than the 18th. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Tucci, do you have any questions or any clarification that you'd need for that?
I think I heard, get on your bike and get it done by 5 o'clock on the 17th or sooner.
At a white.
Thank you for doing that. We really enjoyed working with you guys again through this whole process.
Thank you, sir. Next order of business on the regular agenda is item number three. It's a project update for water distribution project improvement number 1312 and 1313, and review... My computer just blanked out, so forgive me. 1313, a review of preliminary engineering report. Mr. Scott?
Thank you, and good evening, Commissioner President and members of the commission. Before you today is, I just wanted to go through a quick update on our state water commission projects. We did start in 2016 with an application to the state water commission to fund two specific water main distribution projects that will help with our water transmission throughout town. At this point, we are ready to finalize our plans and go out and advertise bids. One thing that's a little different with a project when it does not involve special assessments is a lot of the, you know, the creating of a district, going through an engineer's report process, so on and so forth, is very specific to the special assessment improvement method, so being that this project is being funded through a grant from state water commission and the balance being carried by other city revenues, we don't have those technical processes. So this is really one of the first times, aside from a permit and a review nearly a year ago, that you've seen this project before you, and in this particular case, I'm not here asking to authorize or approve an engineer's report, so to speak, but I did want to go through it, at least to have the dialogue and that transparency like any other project, even though in this particular case, Sentry Code wouldn't require it. What I would be asking for after we get done with our discussion is the authorization to advertise for bid opening. So with that, I'm going to get into a little bit of the engineer's report. I'm going to skip through a lot of the literature and go right to the maps. So, we originally started down the path of having two independent construction projects, the first being on 15th Street Northwest, and extending a water main from Main Avenue down south of the diversion to the south side of town there, which on this particular map is represented by the blue and yellow line. Then, on this next map, is the second water distribution project, which is on 9th Street Northeast, extending a water main from Main Avenue up to 12th Avenue. What we have decided to do is, due to the core permitting process, the crossing of the interstate and the diversion is taking some time because of the 408 permit, so we decided to carve out this blue highlighted portion here and include that with the other project, this 9th Street Northeast project, into one construction package, call it Phase 1, and then Phase 2 will be this yellow area, which is to get the water main now across I-94, across the diversion, down along, eventually connecting onto 21st Avenue. So, at this point, this engineer's report is relating to Phase 1 and Phase 2, but I really just wanted to point out that in terms of the advertising for the bids at this point, it's going to be for Phase 1 only, and we will be... at this point, it's gonna be for Phase One only, and we will, um, be advertising for Phase Two shortly, and it's also good to separate the two into separate projects because the, the nature of the work with the, the crossings of, of I-94 and the diversion, actually twice on the diversion, is, uh, that's really gonna be geared towards a, a contractor that deals with, uh, deep, boring, uh, methods, and, and so it'll be good to isolate that as its own project, and it'll attract a different market of bidders anyway, so. The, uh, kinda the last point I'll make is, back to the State Water Commission funding component, it's 60% of the eligible construction items, so, um, at this point, I believe we have a, a total project cost of, uh, $3 million for, for Phase One, and of that, uh, roughly, uh, $2.8 million is gonna be eligible, so 60% of that is gonna be funded by the State Water Commission, and then with Phase Two, for the most part, that is all gonna be a local cost. So, at this point, I'm gonna stop talking and ask for questions.
Help me with your math. It's a $3 million project, 60% is by the water commission?
Of the eligible items, so of this $3 million, um, it's, it's not really broken out very well in the summation here, but if I recall, there's roughly, I think, $2.8 million of, of eligible local cost for the total project, so 60% of that would be what is gonna be funded by the State Water Commission, the balance will be funded by a city revenue source. Sales tax or utility fund, I'm, I'm not exactly sure.
Mrs. Fisk, have you identified what that resource is yet?
It most likely will be the, um, enterprise funds we will utilize to cover the difference.
Just wanted to make sure that there's upper dialogue going on between all departments.
So, there's two sheets here that have a total project cost, the one, uh, for Phase One, the total project cost is $3.1 million, Phase Two, the total project cost is $1.17 million. With Phase Two, I believe all of that is gonna be a local component, local cost. But Phase One, out of that $3 million, I believe roughly, probably even less, let's call it $2.5 million is probably gonna be what I would estimate right now being the eligible items, so that $2.5 million now, times the 60%, is the dollar amount that will be contributed by the State Water Commission.
$14 million. I'm gonna ask a really slick question. So Phase One does not include crossing the diversion or I-94, you have to wait for a different type of permitting for that and different authorities for that approval. What happens if we don't get that? I mean, I mean, is, is that in process, is there?
Yes.
There been winks and nods that we're going to get it, it's just a, a time-delayed type thing, or what?
Good question, so yes, the, we, we've been on top of that for, uh, over a year, and recently have been notified that we have received the permits. So, we are gonna be coming, uh, soon with the, um, second bid package, and again, the other benefit of separating the two into sep, into multiple projects is, the nature of that work, crossing the, the diversion on I-94, is gonna be deep, uh, boring, uh, methods that will attract a different bidding community, so it'll be good to kinda peel that off onto its own, instead of having the, uh, our, our common general contractors hire us, uh, mark that up, and feel that this will get us the best price.
Well, Phase Two, have any application to the State Water Commission that they might help fund any of that part of the project?
It's all part of the same grant when we started this, uh, so back to the maps here, grant number one that was applied for was both the, both the blue and yellow area, so this was all one continuous project that we submitted a grant for, and this was another separate project that we submitted a grant for, so now with the two grants that we're receiving, what we're kinda doing now is, it's all the same pot of money that we're getting, but we're carving it into two separate construction packages, so it gets, it's, it's more of an administrative complication, if you will, um, something for, you know, staff to, to just make sure we're on top of that, but as far as the State Water Commission is concerned, they'll identify what are the eligible items, and give us 60% of those eligible items, and that's where I'm estimating that to be about $2.5 million right now. But that'll change depending on the bids and depending on final construction cost.
Mr. Jurtebiggs.
Oh, I, just a couple of questions, first off, can you explain to me the benefit of the Phase One of the project, when, when we look at the water distribution loop, like what's the value of that? Because it doesn't seem like we're adding new service through that.
Absolutely, yep, that's, no, it's a great question. So, why pursue these projects at all? If, if I were to put a map up of the entire, uh, water main system of West Fargo, um, there's mapping and there's extensive water modeling that have been done over the years, and we continue to, to keep that current, um, the benefit of these projects, uh, one example would be the industrial area of Butler's, if you're familiar with that particular area, uh, uh, Sand Hills, Butler's, over by Caterpillar Prairie, the, the pressures and the certain things like that, the, um, they're not adequate, so, for example, if a, a large commercial building were to go in, they'd be required to put in their own fire suppression systems, uh, so on and so forth, uh, the, uh, just the demand out there has changed dramatically in the last 10 years, that what we've had in place for distribution systems hasn't kept up with the growth that's been out here, which is why we've, uh, increased our storage capacities, we've built nuke towers in that particular area, uh, so what this really does is, is continues to not only provide the supply, but up, or keep current, uh, with adequate pressures and, and service abilities. The other benefit is just looping in general, if we have one of our main lines, say Main Avenue's, water main has a break and it takes a week to, to get that back online, now we have a backdoor component, so there is a bit of a belt and suspenders, if you will.
Okay. Uh, second part of my, or, second question then, on the 15th, uh, Street, uh, West, are we putting in fire hydrants?
Yeah.
So what is the expense of that? Because that's, if we're asking the West Fargo taxpayers to pay for effectively 40% of the project, to put fire hydrants on a chunk of land that's outside of the city of West Fargo, that seems odd.
Sure, so the, the fire hydrants serve a dual purpose, for one, obviously they help fight fires, which you would think is a local benefit specific to this area, but, uh, the other, uh, reason why we put in fire hydrants is the ability to keep a line, uh, to flush lines, to, to keep them clean, to keep the, the aging from, uh, causing, uh, health issues. So, even if this was an undeveloped, which a lot of this is an undeveloped field, but, um, we are required to put them in to meet fire codes, so from that regard, they, they have to go in, they're not, they're not being installed simply because of the, the local development aspect, if you will.
So we're required to put fire hydrants outside of West Fargo to support fire codes?
Well, in this particular case, this was a logical corridor where we started looking at, and again, that's where I wish I had a, a distribution map of the entire city system, but when we start looking at, where are the corridors that make the most sense and provide that optimal service, this happens to be that, that corridor that makes the most, um, from a efficiency and effectiveness, it is the best corridor, and, and again, I'd have to pull up the, uh, water modeling that has been done, uh, to, to demonstrate that, and the sophistication of that modeling is such that I can change one particular line over here to see how it affects something three miles away, so on and so forth, so that's where, uh, plus this, this is a relatively undeveloped corridor, so the impact is very low, whereas if we were to pick, say, Cheyenne Street to put a new transmission line like this, we'd be ripping up a very major important road that we would...
Well, I hope, I hope the, uh, Fairgrounds is, uh, very fair with us in terms of the land acquisition costs, considering the taxpayers that are paying to provide them better fire taxes.
Absolutely.
Mr. Thorsted.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, uh, 100% sure, oh, yeah, sorry, sewer guy, it's our, it's our project we bid last year, got started in construction last year, it's a, a sewer redundancy pipe that's going in, it's tied into our regional main, regional sanitary sewer lift, the, uh, contractor's a little behind, but it's a sewer system that's being installed, so unrelated to this.
Part of the whole project of sending sewer over to Fargo, that work is, correct?
Incorrect. This, this is, uh, part of a, a secondary force main that we needed to get put in, that ties in, um, it's tied to our regional lift station that's over by, I call RJ's Conoco, the gas station just on the south side of I-94 on Cheyenne Street, that delivers the south side's, uh, wastewater flows to the north, and so what this is, uh, it, it's part of a plan system, when we put, put in this, uh, force main back in 2002, uh, we knew eventually we were gonna have to put in a secondary force main, not only to, to help with capacity as we build out, but also to provide that belt and suspenders, uh, if you will, again, uh, to deal with if there is a break on this particular force main, we have an entire south side of our city would be in, or up, a particular creek. So, this particular force main or the sewer that you're seeing, uh, along drain 21 south of Main Avenue is related to that particular, uh, project, the sewer connection to Fargo is further north.
Thank you. Other questions, Commissioner Simmons?
Dustin, um, part of this process I know goes through the county, as far as the county, are they, are they, have we had conversations with them as far as investing in this as well? In other words, getting money from them for, for a portion of this?
I, in terms of the county, uh, paying for the, the, the installation of the water main?
Well, not paying for it, but yeah, helping, helping us out, I mean, they're, they're obviously gaining, and the fair, again, is under the county, have we ever had conversations with them saying, are you gonna chip in some money over here to help out? I mean, have we, have we ever sat down as a city, do we sit down and talk to the county?
Yes.
To the board, or, I mean, so, because obviously, you know, Eric is right, this is, this is helping the Fairgrounds, so are we gonna raise the rates, the water rates? What, I mean, at some point, we have to, we do have to actually do something, or we have to get some type of participation with the county, I would think.
What is gonna be put in with this particular water main is, uh, this project is a meter pit, that will meter the water that is delivered to the Fairgrounds, and it will be charged, I imagine, just our, our same water rates that we charge anybody else. In terms of the capital expense of putting in this transmission line, again, we're, we're not putting this in anticipating future development, we're not putting this water main in, uh, for the benefit of the Fairgrounds in any way, shape, or form, this is truly for our citywide system, and so in that regard, no, we did not ask the county to participate in the cost, but we did successfully, uh, apply for and receive a grant from the State Water Commission, um, which is geared towards, uh, infrastructure projects like this, uh, but, uh, again, uh, maybe one way to look at it is, when we've done a few other projects, uh, three years ago, we put in a transmission line like this from 40th Avenue down to 52nd Avenue on Cheyenne Street, and then from Cheyenne Street to the west, again, part of a distribution main, we didn't ask, uh, uh, properties on either side of that transmission main to help fund it, it was, again, a, a State Water Commission grant, but that would be very similar to this particular project, where we're not asking the adjacent property owners to participate. If someone is going to tie onto the water main, they are gonna be, uh, charged our water rates to, to receive water.
So in essence, what I'm hearing is, because it is a State Water Commission grant, that's probably was given to us with all of this taken into account.
Correct, yeah, yes.
So, I mean, if we, it would've been somewhere else, we probably would not have gotten that, I mean, I'm, I guess I'm just trying to make sure that, as a city, Eric is right, we're covered too, but some of these fundings we're getting is because of where it is and what it is.
Absolutely.
We would not have gotten them, so, okay.
That's, that's Thursday, yep.
Thank you.
And again, and again, oh, yep, sorry. All, all great discussion, which is why, um, just wanted to have that open dialogue, because in the past, these types of projects, we would've basically went through it, bid it, came back and asked for contract to be awarded, because the century code doesn't require any of these intermediate steps like it does for an assessment district project.
Mr. Thorsted.
They, yes, they have for some time, as, as far as I know, yep.
But in a similar project where you went down County 17, like my neighborhood, there is fire hydrants now in the ditch, but we're on rural water, but there is a fi, a hydrant at the, at the approach of our, of our suburb.
Yes, yep, so, again, a very similar project, it was a, a 16-inch water distribution transmission line, it was meant to get down to the southern part of our city so that we have that ability to maintain fire flows, the supply, um, so on and so forth, and again, that, that was funded with this, a grant from the State Water Commission, and we didn't ask, uh, adjacent landowners to participate.
And they tie right into other existing distribution lines, like you said, you know, this'll help out distributing water, it isn't going just to these, where the blue line ends, it connects somewhere and then helps with the whole flow.
Yep, so we have a transmission line on Main Avenue that we are tying into, and in this particular case, the map that's shown on the screen, we are connecting, we're going south across the diversion, and connecting to a transmission line that is now in the northwest corner of Brooks Harbor on 21st Avenue, yep, so, transmission line to transmission line, and then again, over on 9th Street Northeast, it's transmission line on Main, transmission line on 12th, we're basically filling our gaps, so that we have a complete distribution system.
Will that warrant improving the streets also then, in a different, in a different, uh, uh, special assessment district then? If you're gonna put that in, you're going to more than likely improve those streets.
Luckily, we have the, the ability to, there's a significant room, we've obtained some easements in, in certain cases where we didn't have the room, but we are putting this water main outside of the roadway, and basically just on the other side of the ditch, so that we don't have to disrupt the street, there are a couple of connection points, obviously we're connecting on Main Avenue, so we're gonna have to dig up Main Avenue in a couple of different, uh, areas to make those connections, but predominantly, the entire corridor of the project, we are not, it doesn't come with a, a street reconstruction, which, absolutely correct, if we were to had, if we were to have to do that, we would've been in a situation of special assessing that portion, because that would not have been funded through, uh, the State Water Commission grant.
Is there special permitting required to cross the, or underneath the railroad tracks?
Yes, and we've received those.
Any other questions? Mr. Scott? Alright, so, we're looking for a, uh, motion to approve or authorize for the, for bidding the water distribution project improvement number 1312 and 1313, uh, and a review of the preliminary injury, engineering report as presented this evening. Still will? Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Simmons, Commissioner Olson, been moved and seconded to authorize for bidding the update for water distribution project improvement number 1312 and 1313, and review of the preliminary injury, engineering report as presented by Mr. Scott. Is that adequate?
Perfect.
Alright. Is there any further discussion? During none, we'll proceed to vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next order of business is item number four, City Administrator Mrs. Fisk requests to hire additional personnel. City Administrator Mrs. Fisk requests to hire additional personnel.
Good evening again, Commissioner President and Commissioners. I have put in your packets the request that came from Dustin Scott, our city engineer, and also the request from Tim Solberg, our Director of Planning and Zoning. And as you see, what we're asking for here is an office coordinator position that will add a cost to two thousand and nineteen of thirty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars, and that's benefits and salary by the time we get the person hired to the end of the year. We don't need a budget amendment for this position, as both engineering and planning had positions that were supposed to start January one, and they're just now getting people hired and getting started in the next few weeks. So there actually will be excess funds still after this, but the position, again, will be in next year's budget as well. So I brought this before you, I can honestly say, and I remember having this discussion with Kevin and Dustin and them before we started the engineering department, he said you're gonna go from one to four overnight. And I can definitely see, we're having issues where Dustin will have, he, he needs somebody to be that buffer, because people will come in and take an hour of his time, just literally to yell at him, and he can't get his work done. And so we, we have an idea where to strategically put this person, and this person will help him with the immense amount of organizational filing and day-to-day questions and tasks that he would do, and again, as well with planning, they have, they will have a, starting later next year, they will have a, a group of just planners, but they need somebody to help them with some of their more strategic things and answer some of the incoming questions so that they can work on more of the detailed work. So the two will split the position, it'll probably mostly, engineering, I'm sure, will eat up the most amount of time, but for Dustin Sanity, I think this is just the best way to go and a good time to start now.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisk. Any questions? Yep, thank you.
Been moved, we approve the position of the coordinator.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson, is there a second, please?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jurnibig. It's been moved and seconded to approve the hire of the additional personnel as outlined by Mrs. Fisk. Is there any further discussion? During none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business is number five. Review the two thousand and nineteen mosquito control contract with Cass County Vector Control. Mrs. Fisk?
Yes. Last week, I was able to go to the very riveting Cass County Vector Control meeting. And so at that meeting, they discussed the contracts and the different items that, that are in the contract. One additional thing that they're asking if the City of West Fargo would like to do, that Fargo already does, is there's a certain, in our ET area around town, right now, they don't do any larva siding or anything. They did once last year, just as an additional to help us out, but Fargo already does larva siding and stuff outside on all their ET, and they're requesting that we consider that as well, and they'll pick up half the cost of that with their funds. So the total cost of adding the ET is fifteen thousand, so it'd be seventy-five hundred at the most. That's just their estimate to add the larva siding, which would give additional protection to the citizens within West Fargo. So my request to you would be to approve the contract. It is, as you read it, it's seventy thousand dollars maximum, plus seventy-five hundred of additional ET work to be done.
So are they doing that larva siding in the extraterrestrial, extraterritorial, ET, Lord? There's no, that's not including the, the service to spray it? It's just to do the siding?
I believe, let me look this closer, just to make sure. Does the county will provide services that's in the predetermined extrator, extraterritorial area for various mosquito control activities? Not limited to making application of pesticides on off-highway vehicles, inspection of property, and collection of mosquito traps for populating, so they'll also do the driving spray.
Thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner?
Tina, what, what did we spend last year on vector control?
I believe it was in excess of eighty thousand dollars.
How much, eighty?
Over eighty. We ended up agreeing to do an extra aerial spray because there were just so many mosquitoes.
I'm looking through this contract a little bit, and it, it looks, so are we giving them the okay to go to a maximum of eighty-two thousand, five hundred, or do they have to call you specific?
They have to, yes.
Okay, so that hasn't changed?
They can exceed the seventy thousand dollars within the city, and they can't exceed the seventy-five hundred outside the ET without approval from the city. And we also get one, this contract gets us one aerial spray at no cost. So our first one's always free, the second one's extra.
So it says on the bottom, item number nine, it says if, if at any time total charge to the city exceeds eighty-two thousand, five hundred, the city can request a stoppage?
Yep, we can.
Well, we could request that long before that, can we not?
Well, when we enter into this contract, we're agreeing to go to at least eighty-two thousand, five hundred. So I suppose if we didn't want them to spray?
Well, I guess my question is if we didn't, if you, because I think you're the one responsible, did, if, said, you know, I don't think it's bad enough to do an airplane spray.
Oh, they check with us every single time. Every single entity has to agree by email back to them before they can do any spraying.
But it looks like, it almost looks like here, they could spend up to eighty-two thousand, five hundred without us really doing anything, so I don't get it.
That isn't how they, how they handle it. Anytime what they do, they know, they send us updates constantly of all the graphics of the mosquito populations and so on and so forth, and they do larva siding and ground spraying. They'll let us know that they've done it or that they're doing it, but an aerial spray, they always email ahead, and every single entity has to agree to the aerial spray. Otherwise, if I was to say, no, we don't need it, they'd skip us.
And how about the ground ones?
The ground ones?
They just do them?
They just do those, because they know where the mosquitoes are at, and they know where the populations are at, and there's concern, there's, you know, there's another type of disease that's coming over from somewhere that they're also watching for this year, so it's very important that we, we get it taken care of, but, and I'll send you out the mosquito report.
Okay, thank you. Have a motion?
I'll make a motion to kill mosquitoes.
Commissioner Jurnibig, is there a second, please?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Olson seconds. Been moved and seconded to kill the mosquitoes, to approve the two thousand and nineteen mosquito control with Cass County Vector. Is there any further discussion?
Just have one more question, Mayor. Tina, if, have we discussed at all about raising the fee?
That will be part of our budget discussion, yes.
Okay, and I'm assuming we probably need, it's about time we probably do.
It's about that time, yep.
Okay, thank you.
We have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Proceed, proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business, City Administrator's Report, Mrs. Fisk.
Okay, I will make this short and sweet. City staff, I believe it was Dustin, myself, and Chris, went to the Southeast Cass rural Water District meeting last week, and they were talking about the riverbanks and, you know, now that the water's gone down from the high water from spring, that they wanna go along the riverbeds, they wanna go south of town along the riverbeds and just inspect them to see if there are any areas that could be potential hazards for, like, if they caved in and there's a spot where water could breach or something. And so in coming back and talking with Dustin and Chris, we decided that we would like to have letters go out to everybody north and south of interstate along the river, and then we'll walk the banks and make sure that they're flood protected or high water protected. So all those letters went out last week to people to let them know that you might see people in your backyards, and this is what they're doing, and if you see them, don't shoot, just ask them what they're doing, and that's basically what they're doing. If they find a bad spot, they'll just take a picture of it and mark the location, I believe, where it's at, and then we'll be regrouping again later to discuss how to proceed.
For the record, when you said, don't shoot, Chief Yonkey did not smile.
Oh, no. He's duty, like, he's got the gun.
I, I would have one question on that, Mayor. If Dustin, we do, or John, we do not have to get signatures allowing that? I mean, I know when we get them, when I get them all the time from Moore, you know, to come on down to the river, I usually have to sign off on that. Well, I mean, whoever sent out a letter, I would think that sick, would go with that letter, and then you'd get it returned with the signature, because if you don't, you're going on private property.
Well, what we did is similar to what we did when we knew we were gonna have high water in the spring, we sent the letter requesting, and then if someone has an issue, they call us, then we'll go further. And we did send them on behalf as well of Southeast Cass, because Southeast Cass is paying for the mailing and the postage and the, and the notifications, so.
I, I'm totally fine with it, Tina, I just know there are people that do not want you on their property.
Yep, yep, and, and they've got our contact information on the bottom, so if they contact us, then we'll just tell them we won't inspect your property in the back, so, yeah, I understand. We just thought this was way quicker and easier than having to get all those signatures up and down the river. The next item I have is that Tuesday at nine o'clock, there will be a Northwest Transportation Planning Meeting. If you want details on that, I bet Tim could come up and tell you all about it. I just know it's here at City Hall on Tuesday at nine o'clock. And then don't forget Saturday, the Street Fair from ten to six. We've got an awesome lineup. Ellen's done an amazing job, her and Melissa. So that's ten to six, and then the dance is from seven to nine. So that is all I have. Oh, and I'm sorry, the budget is proceeding, and we'll be making appointments with, with all of you after we meet with department heads to go over where we're at with the budget.
I think Melissa, Melissa said the street fair is mandatory, that all the commissioners show up, right? And volunteers, yes.
The North Dakota Lake City's got a meeting coming up here in the near term?
Yes, they do. I forgot, I didn't look at it on my calendar. Thursday at five-thirty here in the commission chambers. Thank you. I forgot all about that. Thank you. Do you have anything else for me?
Anything else from Mrs. Fisk?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next order of business is construction updates. Mr. Scott? Questions for Mr. Scott?
I'm loaded up on Nineteenth Avenue with the sewer connection to Fargo. Where are we at with that?
Are there questions for Mr. Scott?
Dustin, yeah, when, when are we looking at getting Thirty-second completely open? If, if they're not? Well, there's not a, yeah, I was gonna say, they're being fined still every day, right? Right. Do they, like, have one lane open or did at one time for a while? Right, one lane? Is it still, is it still open, one lane, or not?
Yeah, a turn lane, no going east. Now, for a while there, there was no turn lane.
Okay, that's.
How about, like, the bridge over the diversion that's getting, the bridge itself is done, but the buttments and all that stuff need to?
I had a tour today with the engineers on everything south of the interstate. We were on the bridge, we were on the pump station, the big pump station for the underpass, we were down the way on Fortyth, we were on Thirty-second, and Thirty-second to Fortyth, we traveled all of that, and I'm optimistic, but I would certainly request that as the June fifteenth and our contractors are clo, are getting that closed down, that indications, he kept very well abreast of that, that when that Fortyth opens east and west, boy, we wanna be able to tell the world as soon as possible. And the same goes with Thirty-second for whatever changes they've made. I was also in the pedestrian tunnel today and how that's coming along, and so it's, it's proceeding, but gotta ways to go yet. Anything else for Mr. Scott? Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Scott. Next order of business is the correspondence. Mrs. Fisk, do you have anything for us this evening? Do any of the Commissioners? Do any of the Commissioners have anything of correspondence or, uh, anything, uh, to go to the order, non-agenda items? With that, Commissioner Simmons?
Make a motion to dismiss.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Olson. Move and second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.